Bring the regular city commission meeting for Tuesday, June 5th to order. I could have a roll call, please.
Mayor Hines is absent this evening.
I'm sorry, I'm ahead of myself. We have to, didn't have my glasses on. You do the roll call.
Do you want to?
Go ahead and do the roll call.
Okay. Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Vogt.
Here.
Commissioner Short.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
I move we excuse Commissioner Hines tonight.
I'll second it.
All favor?
Aye.
She's excused. I stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any announcements out there? I don't believe we do. Okay. The consent agenda.
Yes, there is one item on the consent agenda and it's the approval of the minutes from the May 15th, 2018 regular city commission meeting.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Approved. New business. Ordinance number nine dash eighteen. This is the first reading and it's considered an emergency ordinance.
An emergency ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the code of ordinances for the city of Pickwa.
Ms. Wall.
Thank you. This is our traditional ordinance we do at least once a quarter to enact the codification of the ordinances that were passed through the quarters. So this particular ordinances, for those ordinances that were approved by the commission from January 1, 2018 through March 31st, 2018. The reason for the emergency is so that these can be immediately codified since they are already in effect.
We need a motion to waive the three reading rule, right?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to waive the three reading rule. Second.
All favor?
Aye. I move we approve ordinance number nine dash eighteen.
I'll second it.
Have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Short.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
It's passed. Number three, resolution number R-87-18.
An emergency resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a project agreement with Pogomire Design Group to provide construction services for the city's PY 2017 downtown revitalization project.
Mr. Sommer will provide staff report.
Thank you. Good evening. This item comes to you as a result of our award of a $300,000 CDPG Community Development Block Grant for downtown revitalization. This contract would allow Pogomire Design Group to do the construction administration for the downtown revitalization projects in accordance with the rules and regulations outlined in the CDPG program. This agreement is a not to exceed amount of 44.5, which is covered by the program and administrative dollars allowed under the grant agreement. The up to amount is based off of the number of projects. In the original application, we, based on the interest from the downtown property owners, we anticipated 15 projects would be completed. Having gone through initial applications with downtown property owners, some of the projects are coming in less than what we had expected, so we anticipate that we may be able to do more projects. The up to amount is based off of a per project cost, so the final amount will be based on the number of projects that we complete. The item is written as an emergency. As you know, with most grants, we are on a timeline to complete the projects. The downtown property owners are eager to get them underway and the funds are available.
All right. My understanding is that there are 20 people now that?
I think the latest count was 21 and there may be more. It could be up to 25 before.
So the budgeted amount is still good?
Yep. It is.
Now, the business owners or the property owners get to dictate what, if they use this for like a facade to change the way their building looks, they still get to decide what that is. It's just they get money from this grant, but also do they have to also work on like electric plumbing and all that with it?
I don't think, does it apply to all those? But, and I think that they share in the cost too of this, depending on what they're trying to do.
The intent, so there are, all of those that you mentioned, Commissioner Martin, are allowable uses for the grant. Priority is given to facade. It is a facade improvement program. But if there are other needs for the building that are, where it needs to be brought up to code, for instance, the HVAC system, a roof, those are allowable expenses as well. So yes, the property owner does submit an application based off of what the individual need is for that property.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Well, I was going to ask, do we have anybody in the audience? But no, we don't, so. I could entertain a motion.
I move we adopt resolution R-87-18.
I'll second it.
All favor?
Aye.
Number four, resolution number R-88-18.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to A&amp;A Safety for the purchase order of a...
Portable?
Purchase order of a portable traffic control system.
Resolution R-88-18.
Mr. Krieger.
Thank you. The next three items were recommended for Pickwa City Commission approval by the Pickwa Energy Board at our may, regular meeting of May 22nd. The first item is, we identified the need for a portable traffic control system as we were working, started, beginning to work on the line relocation project that we're working on with Dayton Power and Light and it's related to the riverfront redevelopment project. And part of this project requires a relocation of facilities along Statler and Troy-Sidney roads. It's two lane traffic, 50 mile an hour traffic. And after much research, we identified a system that is licensed by A&amp;A Safety and they're the sole distributor of this system. It's the only portable traffic control system that's approved by the state of Ohio. So after running this system for a few months, we looked at the alternative of purchasing the unit. We were offered a purchase price with credit, partial credit for the rental. Talked with the other departments. The other departments have a use for this system as well and it's very efficient. Obviously, it doesn't tie up your employees' flagging and if you're ever able to see it, it works very well. So we're going to need this system to complete this project. We'll probably be utilizing it for the next three to four months to complete this project. And then, then again, this is a resource we'd continue to use within the city and be shared among the underground utilities department, public works, and the power system.
Safety?
Safety.
Leasing fire can use it as well?
We haven't talked to them, but if there's a need for it, certainly.
Might be.
Yeah, it'd be available to anybody.
Great.
It'd be housed in the, in the power system building. Our employees would be the ones that would be going out and doing the training. There's certain setups that are required. It's a computer-driven system and it, basically, as traffic flows through, it records and captures and adjusts. It's, it's pretty efficient.
Any comments from the audience? Anybody?
Well, I will say that I, I saw the system in use out on Troy-Sidney and actually, well, I was very impressed with it and how it works and it seemed to know when the cars were there and when they weren't. So I was pretty impressed.
Anybody else? I could use a motion?
I'll make a motion for resolution R-88-18.
I'll second it.
Need a roll call on that or a vote?
Need a roll call.
Do we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Short.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Resolution is passed. Resolution number R-89-18.
A resolution awarding a contract for replacement radio communications for the power system.
So the second item has to do with the radio communication system that not only the power system used with many departments within the city. Miami County 911 has been working on a replacement and retiring the legacy system that they've had in place for many years. They've reached out to the city a while ago to let us know what their plans were. So all the departments, including power, we've evaluated the options. The power system basically looked at either a standalone system or really tying into the Miami County system that they're moving to, the Marx system. After a lot of time and effort and, and study on this item, we came to the conclusion for the power system that the standalone system was a better alternative. Radio communications from a safety standpoint are really vital for electric utility in terms of switching. There's a lot of open air communication that takes place. The standalone system would be similar to the one that TIP City, they were in the same situation we were in. They decided to go ahead with the standalone system. We have counterparts in the electric utility there. They've been very satisfied with the standalone system. So what we would end up doing is we end up with a license, FCC license for our frequencies. We end up with a tower that's going to be installed on the power plant, similar to what we've done with the AMI. Has very good reach. We've already tested the system. The radios that we would be buying to use with our standalone system are actually cheaper than the Marx radios that were offered by Miami County and we just feel like it gives us a lot more control moving forward in terms of our communication. We, we're working on a fairly significant project right now at one of our substations. We did some switching last Friday. We had a lot of difficulty with doing it. It's obvious that the old system is not performing with the county like it, it had in the past. So we're anxious to move forward with a more reliable communication system. And WS Electronics has been the longtime vendor for communicate, radio communication systems in the county and that, that's who we reached out to, to evaluate these alternatives.
Anybody from the audience? Commissioners, what do we have to say?
Does the current system allow you to communicate with other departments?
The current?
And the standalone will do the same?
It does.
Great.
Yes.
That's all I wanted to hear.
Could you use a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number R-89-18.
I'll second it.
Have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Short.
Aye.
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Resolution passed. Resolution number R-90-18.
A resolution awarding a contract for the installation of a replacement roof for the power systems number nine gas turbine building.
This is the final item that was recommended for commission approval at our last energy board meeting. We've been, before this commission, a number of times talking about projects related to the city's gas turbines and how vital those units are to the city in terms of a backup power source as well as really a way to reduce the city's electric costs. On average, having these units in place allows to save about 7% on our power bill each year, which can be one and a half to two and a half million dollars. So very significant. We're, we're working on a project right now, replacing the starting diesel and rebuilding the torque converter and we have Solzner on site doing that work and it'll be complete and ready for the hot weather that'll be coming up, which is when really the need for these units are in place. But this, this final item, which we've been planning for some time, really ties back to when we pulled the thermal block out of our number nine gas turbine. And when we did that, the original roof that was on that building, over 50 years old, we had a lot of issues and really identified the need, not only replace the roof, but we need to replace it with a segmented roof that'll allow us to maintain the equipment. If we need to pull these large pieces of equipment out, we can remove sections of the roof. And so this project and this contract with Finney Industrial Roofing would allow us to replace that roof, not only the new roof, but a segmented roof that allow for easier maintenance and it's really a custom design, so it's, it's certainly more expensive than what a normal roof would be, but it allows us to maintain our equipment in a pretty effective manner.
Commissioners, anybody?
Since this is going to be a segmented roof, do they have some kind of warranty for leakage on this? Since it's going to be put up so that it's just, you can take certain pieces out?
Right. So the, I'm sure the initial installation is going to have the one-year warranty that's, that'll go with the roof and then there'll be a process that we'll have to utilize when we remove the sections to, to put it back together. And we very easily could use the same company to help us, you know, remove the panels and reinstall them. And in that manner, we would kind of guarantee ourselves that we'd have good performance with the roof. But the initial roof would have a one-year warning.
Okay.
Could you use a motion?
I move to adopt resolution R-90-18.
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Short.
Aye.
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Resolution passed. Resolution number 91-18.
A resolution of intent to vacate public right of way.
Mr. Sommer.
Thank you. This item comes before you as a request from the property owner, very similar to what you saw at the last commission meeting with the Orfelt Building where you've got a structure that encroaches on, what is on paper anyway, public right of way. This is for a property located on East Main Street, near Carr. There's a structure there that was built at least 40 years ago, probably before then, that does encroach on public right of way. There was at one time an alleyway there. It is not improved, nor is it used as an alley currently, nor does it have any public purpose that we can see in the future. As you may recall, this is the first step in the process in order to vacate an alleyway. If it receives approval from the commission tonight, it will go before the planning commission for public hearings. If approved and recommended there, it'll come back before you for the actual ordinance in order to vacate.
Do we have anybody from the audience? Commissioners, do you have anything?
No. I move we adopt resolution number, number R-91-18.
I'll second it.
Do we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Commissioner Short.
Aye.
Resolution passed. Resolution number R-92-18.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Insulated Roofing Systems, Inc., for the purchase of a replacement roof for the wastewater department. The first...
Yeah, go, go ahead.
The first step tonight is to amend the title of the resolution. The resolution currently states a purchase order, so there would need a motion to amend it to state a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement rather than a purchase order.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second? Chris, second. All favor?
Aye.
Amendment is passed.
Okay. Mr. Melvin will provide staff report.
Thank you. This is another roof request tonight. We have a flat roof that's above our operations building that has, houses blowers and heavy electric and there's leaking and we don't like that around electricity, but it's a 75 by 40 building that the spray foam insulation would be similar and standardized to the rest of our buildings. We requested, we had invitations for bids for eight companies. One showed up for the pre-mandatory bid meeting and only one bid. So we're requesting Insulated Roofing Systems from TIP City.
Anybody in the audience? Commissioners, do you have anything?
No, this is for an insulated roof plus a new roof, correct?
Pardon?
This is for insulating it and putting a new roof on, correct?
Correct. The spray foam does insulate as well as waterproofs and it has a 10-year warranty along with every 10 years you have a sealer that's put on and then you end up with another 10-year warranty beyond that. And it's, we have numerous buildings throughout the plant, flat roof buildings throughout the plant that has a similar system as well.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion for the resolution. For resolution R-92-18. Second.
Do we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Aye.
Commissioner Short.
Aye.
Resolution passed. Resolution R-93-18.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Valley Ford Truck Incorporated for the purchase of a dump truck for the Public Works Department.
I'm going to ask that you table this item until July 3rd meeting. I'm not satisfied with the bidding process and we need time to correct, correctly obtain proper bids.
Can we have a vote on that?
Yeah, you need a motion.
I move we table resolution R-93-18 until the first meeting in July?
Yes, July 3rd.
July 3rd meeting.
All favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay. That's been tabled now. Comes to the time of the meeting where we have public comment. Do we have any public out there that would like to comment? I think we got a full house here tonight. No. Okay. City managers' report.
Yes, tonight I wanted to take the time to update you on the wastewater plant construction that's underway and I've asked our wastewater system superintendent, Chris Melvin, to provide that. Just to give you an update, the project is moving along rapidly and we thought you should see what's happening out there. Chris?
It's actually hard to believe. I don't want to bore you with this doll picture, but this is what we look like last year before we started construction, just to give you a basis. Peterson Construction was awarded the contract for construction late last summer. And you were looking at, I'll back up real quick. You're looking south toward Troy with this view. Peterson Construction had, I'm sorry. The quarry, Pickwa Materials had donated the land just east of us for this construction project. So when you have a construction sign that you post on your gate, you're, you're starting to move. And then if you have a groundbreaking ceremony, it becomes official. And then as the construction and equipment arrives on the bare ground, you actually are getting real at that point. It's kind of hard to see from the picture. There is a lone surveying stake there as well. First concrete was poured, which is the first of lots of concrete, but that was mid-October. And with this build, there's lots of steel and lots of concrete. We are pouring basically tankage and buildings to facilitate processes, but lots of tanks. So that's two mats of steel and the floor, the clarifiers, three clarifiers will be two foot thick. Through the winter, we had the cold spell right after New Year's, that they were shut down literally for about a week and a half, but they did work through and muddle through most of the winter. What you see here is the two oxidation ditches, steel being started on that. They had a lot of excavation. Not so much digging because it was already dug because of the quarry mining process, but they had some fill issues that they had to have some compaction prior to setting that steel. This is the headworks. Actually, this is the new wet well for the headworks. They're submersible pumps. Currently, we have screw pumps, influent lift screw pumps. This will actually lift the water once completed 42 feet high, which gives us a lot of elevation to work down through the various processes, gravity flow through the various processes. But with this, they had to actually dig through 10-foot of bedrock to get down to the necessary depth. And they also threw out the early spring, which was kind of cold like winter, started on the BioSolids, BioSolids building at the south end of the plant for excavating. And then we started the floor in April, the floors of the oxidation ditches. There are two oxidation ditches, both being 190 feet long by 100 feet wide. And that was a fairly long process. They'd line concrete trucks up and pump most of the day. But it was unique because they really can't pour it all at once. You have to section it off like pieces of pie and then have expansion joints in between each pour. And this is the start of the walls for the oxidation ditch. On your right, you can see a crane lifting in the panels. And what's unique to this picture is you have to envision the concrete truck and the pump truck under dirt. That's, there's that much backfill. Because that was a, an excavated site with the quarry, we need to backfill up to those walls, not all the way to the top, but those trucks will be, what you see, the view will be under dirt. We've also started, this is a view on the right of the existing headworks, so we have to connect the old plant to the new plant. And you see a old fuel tank there that we used to have fuel oil, that they've excavated that as well. But again, they'll have to get through that 10-foot bedrock level as well. So some jack, jackhammer is starting and they'll have to jackhammer through the wall of the existing headworks building too, or the existing wet well, I'm sorry. And the reason I showed you the boring doll picture before is because this is what it looks like as of yesterday. This is the same view facing south again with all the construction thus far. So we've had over 12,000 yards of concrete and there's 1,500 tons of steel as well. And it's been nine months, approximately a quarter of the way through the project. We are looking at summer 2020 for final completion and since the substantial completion will bring us to the compliance schedule for February 2020, but liquid will be flowing through the system next November, November of 19. They've had great weather, that's for sure. In the, in the foreground, you see one of the tanks full of water. They've already leak tested it and they're moving their way into the other two as they get the overflow troughs poured. And then this is a, a view. I'm sorry, I got too far. That is the view that you originally saw as bare ground and then now you're looking north toward the power plant in the downtown. And again, you have that tank being tested. Off to the left is the pad for the BioSolids building as well and that will have enclosed storage throughout our winter months when we're not able to apply. And then if you have any questions, I want to thank Brett Reed and the power system for their drone.
How, how long will this, this be, how many years will this be good for?
Oh, the structures, the structures will be out 50. I won't see the end of it. But equipment-wise, they're interchangeable parts, so we'll be able to change mixers and pumps. But currently, we have 1957 structures. One of the aerobic digesters will still be a 1957 structure. So concrete, even in a wastewater application, lasts quite a while and especially the way this is designed with all the steel and all the concrete. So structurally, we're good to go and capacity, we're very well to go.
Even if we expand the city, we have enough capacity.
I think this takes us up to 22 million gallons.
Peak of 22 million, the design flow currently is 4.5 million gallons. The new design will be 8.7 million gallons. So we're nearly doubling our current design, which means that if we had, you know, the 8.7, that, that's more than what we peak out now. We only bring in eight now. Well, we would be able to efficiently treat 8.7 million gallons and after that, then you're into a diluted flow that, with 22 million. And the EQ basin also will be, if we need it, is there to fill up as well. I would hope not. I want an ARC.
Well, I thought you'd enjoy seeing the progress that's being made. It's kind of neat to see it from overhead, to see all the progress, so.
I like the drone. It's pretty neat.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Can you zoom in?
Very good.
Okay. Now, we have the city commissioners. Chris, do you have anything?
Yeah. I wanted to congratulate all the Pickwa High School and Lehman High School graduates. I'm talking to a friend of mine who's the school board president. He said that Pickwa graduation was an hour and 15 minutes, record time, and a lot of proud graduates. And I know a lot of his kids and I was very happy to congratulate them. I know that Chautauqua's going on and if you get a chance, citizens, please attend. It's a, it's a good time. The St. Mary's Festival is also this weekend, so if you get a chance, Friday, Saturday, Sunday during the day, stop out and make that some gambling, but the food is what I go for, so. I'll be in the lemon shakeup booth on Saturday. And I want to thank Father Bulte at St. Boniface, St. Mary's for being a great priest. He's moving on to two different churches and we've got a new priest coming in. And aside from that, I've got nothing else. Thank you.
Yeah, I just got to participate in the Memorial Day Parade and it was outstanding weather and we had good crowds and...
And basically, most of the commissioners were able to be there. And so I just wanna keep promoting the idea that come out for our parade and support our community and our veterans. So thank you.
John?
Yeah. One of the things I'd like to ask for is, could we get some kind of presentation done on the solar field? How it's set up, that we're through next era and all that? Because one of the things I saw is people don't understand what's going on, so it might help if they did.
We might do that under my report next meeting.
Okay, that's fine.
We got some... Mr. Krieger had sent me an overhead drone picture. It's pretty amazing how fast that is going.
They're cruising right along, because I drive by it usually a couple times a day.
Yep. So it's pretty neat, so we'll ask Ed to provide kind of an update on how that project works.
It looks pretty neat.
Okay. That's it.
Well, I've been checking around, and you people are doing pretty good with your grass. I hadn't seen any grass in the streets. I did see one. I think they saw me run around and come back, and they were taking care of it. So thank you very much for not blowing the grass in the streets. It helped us out a lot, and congratulations to our two thousand eighteen graduates.
We hope our clerk is feeling better, Becky, as well.
We'll check and let you know.
And I just had an email from Mary Teach. Our class has a breakfast once a month, and this Saturday, or Friday, it'd be our sixtieth anniversary of graduation.
Wow.
Tell me, that makes you feel old. I'm just a little tight back, I can't say. Okay, that's all I have. We need to have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.